Hey, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session, October third, twenty twenty-two. Who would please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance?
Good afternoon. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for how you kept us, kept the storm away from us. But God, we pray for those that were affected by it in Florida and South Carolina. God, we ask your blessing and protect the God's law school system and all safety. In your son Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, citizens address the board. Okay, item four is approval of our work session agenda. Have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor? Motion through, out there. All right, item five, questions?
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome back. It's just two short weeks ago that we met, so the agenda's kind of more recent with stuff that's happening since then. First thing you have is going area one, student success. Uh, just kind of a notice that how far along in the school year we already are, this Friday, that marks our end of the first nine weeks. So this one quarter of our school year already under our belt. And at high school's perspective, that's, that's half of the semester because they earn semester credits. So, um, we're moving right along and things have been good. Uh, on the number two, the projected graduation rate for class of twenty twenty-two, the official number will come out this Thursday. That number is still embargoed. Uh, but just to give you a preliminary, we're asking questions, uh, because our original projection was ninety-six percent. Well, it looks like they shifted a couple of things on us that they haven't done in the past, which was their, our access kits, our, um, students who take the G A and that alternative test. In the past, when their cohort came up, um, they counted against you. And we've always counted it that way. I mean, we just knew they weren't going to be one of our graduates. They have now shifted so that if they stay with us, no matter what, past what they normally would have had, they don't count against you. So our graduation rate's gonna actually go up a little. Now, there's good and bad. It's gonna look great this year, but then eventually those students will then count against us. So we have to time it and we, and they are then added to the other students whose cohort, if you follow me on this, was, is this coming year. If they leave, then you have the two students that now get added along with the other two students, which then means we're going from a very high, maybe as much as ninety-nine, down to maybe ninety-three. So pros and cons to it. Um, we're asking the question, they did change the rules a couple of years ago that said that they realized that it was a struggle why these students were, were counting against you for graduation rate. Because we know that they're not gonna graduate with a regular diploma. And so they shifted it to say if they made progress towards their goals, they would not count against you any longer. But that didn't take effect till next year. So now we're asking the question, okay, so now we just kick the can down the road on these other kids from last year. What happens if they fall in line with the same cohort as the year of this other policy impacts? I don't know the answer to that yet, but it, it, we're gonna see a shift in our graduation. This year it's gonna be good, later well impact us later on down the road. I know that's a lot to throw at you, but I, I did want to make sure that you, you were able to, to see that ahead of time. Uh, number three is our projections. You know, we, we're almost nine weeks completed. For this particular cohort, we're looking at a total possible graduating class of seventy-nine. We do know, just like we just talked about, that we have two students, uh, that are access students that right now we're counting that they would not count for us, uh, but they'll actually count against us. And we might end up finding out that they kicked their, their numbers down. We did nothing to do that. They literally changed it in the database. We did not. They being the D O E.
D O E.
So we have fifteen students that are currently not on track. And so during the course of this year, um, the, the numbers that they have there are not out of whack. I mean, there's very possible again that we'll be in our mid-nineties for graduation rate barring any other issues that take place. So, uh, a good projection, seventy-eight percent. That's, I think, higher than it was actually four years ago for the whole class at, at actual graduation. Um, doing well with, with tracking our students. Any questions at all on the graduation rate? I, I do think that moving the block was very advantageous for us in, in a lot of different matters. It allows us to, to reschedule kids into classes and get them caught back up. All right, so Mr. Masah, if you'll step up, we're gonna talk about several of the items that are on here. What I, what I've done when I've listed these items is we've got a lot going on. Last board meeting, y'all approved the, the local projects account. And so, you know, we, it's time for us to start putting in for proposals and things like that. So I just want to kind of highlight those. And Mr. Masah, if you'll pick up on those, I'll chime in when you're.
Great evening, boards. Pleasure to stand before you. McIntosh County Middle School Kitchen Project is, um, well on the way. Since our last meeting, the windows have been put in, the, what we're lacking, the floors are done. They were finishing up painting, um, as of today when Dr. Paulson and I did a walkthrough. They were putting the final touches of painting in the main rooms. And, um, it's just finishing up.
Oh, I missed that part. I am so sorry. I, I missed that part. When it flicked up, I went right to the next one. So if y'all don't mind, if we continue with Mr. Masah. And that will be the financials. I, I apologize also.
The, um, big, big thing that's left is we're waiting on doors. They have been shipped. The doors will, um, be the final big piece of the puzzle and then knickknacks to finish up the final construction. But it's looking great. The floor has turned out awesome. The color scheme is, I think, um, beautiful. And the windows really make it a, um, destination hotspot for lunch for sure. So it's in good repair.
So what you're, what you're missing right now, board, is that the cooler freezer, which we know right now is not projected to come in until February. But we do have a plan. We will take the smaller freezers that are over in the existing kitchen. We can move those over for the second semester and we'll put them against one of the walls that is available. And so we'll be able to store for a week and just keep running. So that, that's still operational. We're missing our ice flaker and we're missing the, the pass-through cooler and pass-through warmers. Those still haven't arrived and won't arrive till the first part of January. Um, we also are missing a combi oven. So those things are all on track. Uh, but none of those things would prevent us from starting in there on the sec, um, for the start of second semester. I, I will say that, uh, you know, Mr. Masah's correct, the majority of the work is done. There are a few little, you know, checklist things that, that punch list things that need to be taken care of. But it is, it is really going to be a great, great asset to this, this school district. I know that this week they've doubled up their manpower on the electrical work so that they can get the electrical part going. And so, uh, that's been the longest part. These doors, in the past, you would have had them in a week. With supply shortage, it's literally, we knew at the start of the project when they ordered them, that it was gonna be late September and, and now we're pushing into October to get those. But, um, I, I really believe that once we have all that done and the fire marshal comes through, we should have the ability by the end of October to give us occupancy on that. So. It's very, very good.
Solar panels, this is another issue with, um, the supply chain. I keep telling you that it's gonna be completed, but we are looking at now in early November for the last part for the solar project to come in and then waiting on Georgia Power. Nothing within our control, um, if the parts don't come in, you just can't move forward. So we're waiting on a specific piece to hook the rest of middle school up. Todd Grant is significant when finished, so we're just waiting on that, that last little part. That was an update. From Josh, the solar panel gentleman, two day.
Now, I will mention this, that, and you may have already experienced this at home, but the cost of electricity has gone up. And so each of our schools, uh, we're looking at five or six hundred dollars a month more. So it's been going up since the beginning of the year. And we're just, we, we just need to get this thing done because we're locked in at like eight and a half cents a kilowatt hour. And that's, right now it's running thirteen. So we'll see your cost savings once we get this thing in place.
So is, is Todd Grant online yet, or are we gonna bring them both online at the same time?
Bring them both online. Um, one of the things that is still lacking is Georgia Power says that they would be two to three weeks with their, um, review of the solar panels. And so, um, we're still waiting on them and then we'll bring them all together at one time.
And we don't wanna rush them. We want them to do it right. And so the other part of that is that they're pretty much completed at, at Todd Grant. But once Georgia Power is completely done with both reviews, because they're doing them simultaneously, then, and I did ask, I said, once we're ready, we need to make sure we've done through all of our technical inspections before we flip the switch and make sure that everything's good.
As part of our middle school project with the Ma- McIntosh County Middle School Basketball Court refinishing, that court is as old as the school is. It's, um, in need of refinishing. We've gotten the first stages of quotes on doing the same project that we did at the high school. Totally stripping it down, um, replacing a couple of little sections that need to be replaced that commit some water damage. And, um, our new logo in the center, Bucs on the ends, and, um, re-striped and, and done right. So, um, that is in the process. That doesn't need an R F P or anything for that. That's just a, um, quote that we'll be giving you that has, that's using the same gentleman that we used for the high school and the same gentleman that we've been using for a while. So that, that's, um, in the, in the works. While we're in there, it's time for those bleachers to be replaced. Those bleachers are, I guess, as old as the gym. They were, I guess, redone when they were turned to Thunderbirds and if you remember back that's a, a long time ago. They don't pull out anymore. There are electric, uh, motors that have gone bad and, um, they just won't match. And when we have this new floor, like the bleachers are something that needs to be, um, replaced. We hopefully will have to coordinate with our, the guy that's doing the floor and us taking those bleachers out. We got a quote that was a, a lot of money to take out the bleachers and we think that we can take them out ourselves if this project goes forward. I will be doing an R F P. I've gotten it almost done. It's a, a cost, but we'll get competitive bids and we'll pick the better, best one if, um, we choose to go forward with that. So the bleacher project would really make that gym, um, pop when it has a brand new floor, new bleachers. And being that the middle school's on a five-year rotation for painting, it'll also be painted inside there. So if you can, um, just imagine walking into that side of the school with a beautiful, brand-new gym pretty much, a beautiful kitchen and cafeteria area, we've really upgraded, uh, that school. It's got great bones and it's, um, a, a great school to be at.
Mr. Masah?
No, I was just gonna say those bleachers came in nineteen ninety, I think.
Really? So they're, they're.
They've been there, they've been there a long time.
Well, they, you can tell when you walk in because, you know, honestly, they are, they're, they're a safety issue as well. And so.
And the reason I remember that is Meg and I were doing the concession stand here. And Ms. Bittaker was the principal at middle school and they got new bleachers in there. And they knew, or the athletic district knew, that we could no longer, Ms. Bittaker wasn't gonna let anybody in the gym drink or drink. And so they gave it to us. They, and we thought we were gonna make some money. But I, I remember that clearly. But anyway, it was like.
Very bad, very bad condition.
So that, you already started the quotes, um, for the, um, bleachers?
Well, we've got a quote, but after, you know, knowing our policy that it is an R F P, um, situation that we're gonna do it the right way, put an R F P out there and then the people that we got initial quote from will, uh, bid just like everybody else.
When you said our, um, maintenance will take those bleachers out, how long is that gonna take?
Well, today was our first day going in there and really taking a look at it. Um, it, it's, um, we don't know yet. As we get into it, we have capable proof. If the timing is gonna be very, um, critical that we're able to time this just right. And, um, we've talked to the gentleman who does the floor and it's very possible that he could be sanding one side while we're taking the bleachers down on another, that we're gonna really, we're working in concert with him to make it happen. The facts are that there's nothing that a sawzall and our team can't take down with.
Well, and, and I get that. I just, um, you know, I would hate for our staff to be pulled in so many directions and neglect something over here to be called away for something that's not, you know, and it's what's gonna lose because something's gonna lose if they're spending time doing that.
We talked about that, being after basketball season and basketball at the middle school being an earlier sport, that we can start in the spring and if the grass won't be grown, we'll be able to pull some of our grass through. That was a significant conversation that we had this year when the timing of it is gonna be. And, um, we talked about that. And we also talked about, um, really taking a hard look at what it's gonna take so they have a solid plan moving into there.
But it was a significant amount of money for them to come in and do it. And when I say this, I believe it's ten or twelve thousand dollars for the company to come in and, and do it. And if, if it's a day or two of us doing it, that's a significant savings that I think might be. But we're, we're analyzing that determinant. And we had a very good meeting today with Mr. Broker and Mr. Riles and Mr. Masah and myself just to say a timeline. Let's develop something that's realistic so that if we do get the right proposals and, and with the painting, the floors, as well as the bleachers and the curtains, that's, that's a true renovation of that area. Um, there's a lot that needs to take place to get that done right. So we don't inconvenience anybody and we still keep everything else going.
Yeah, the P T A may be willing at one point ever raising money for new curtains.
Well, this broker's done it in due diligence and we got a great price and we got a great plan, um, for those curtains. It was really odd, um, to find out that the actual installation of the curtains was more than the curtains they wanted.
Just crazy.
But our team is able to get our lift on there and we'll be able to cut that cost out and, um, have some really nice curtains. Today, when we were in there, um, it was so apparent how bad those brown curtains are in the back. Um, it, it's really time for, uh, change there. Stadium football field repair and replacement options. You know, our football field has gone through a, a, a lot of transformations. It's been there for a long time since the school was started. So, um, we are having some issues that are significant with the drainage. Things are starting to happen where the drains are slipping down. And Mr. Riles found out exactly where our drains go. And believe it or not, we have a pond right there and the drains don't all go to that pond. Half of the drains go all the way around the field into that back pond by, um, King Swamp. Well, only two of them go to the, the main pond. Some of those are sinking down and we're, we're starting to experience some issues that just over time that have, it just so happens that you can really see where the soil difference is in that field. Wherever they started pouring the, the field soil at the very pond side of it, you can see that it's lush and bringing grass and then it starts to thin out. So, um, there's a definite soil issue on that. So we have to take a hard look at what we can do with that football field to bring it back up. You know, um, with time, things start to deteriorate. You wanna think, man, we got a great field and we have a, a great facility, but you have to keep, uh, keep up on it and make some adjustments. And it's time for us to take a serious look at it. What are some of the options that we can go with to make that field pristine again and, um, get back on the track where it needs to be?
Well, and part of that becomes this, just, I wanted the board to be aware that we have struggled with that field for quite some time. And, you know, the, the company that maintained it for what, about six, seven years? Um, and discussions with them is that they've struggled with keeping the weeds out. It's been a problem. And so we dedicated the, the, and I'm going on my, end of my third, fourth year. The best year was when we dedicated one employee that, that's what he did. He was out there taking out the weeds and cleaning it up. But that, that's labor intensive. And so, um, it's in a bad state, any way you look at it. With the, with the drainage, they've become a safety issue. And now it's also a potential drainage issue. So we're gonna have to address that sooner or later. And so all I want to make sure is if, as the board looks at this, is we review all options. We can continue with status quo and just keep fixing and, and going along. We can look to the possibility of, of stripping it down and, and putting better soil in it and sodding it. A lot of school systems right now, they're moving to, to the turf. And so it's, it's pervasive, but I'd like us to be able to put our options together and bring it to the board. Um, putting turf on it is, is an option. It does not necessarily mean that it's going to fix all of our problems either. And so, um, you know, they're good and bad to come with that. They're good and bad to come with, with stripping it down. It is a, it is a highlight to this community. And so when you talk about it, it's used by boys' football, it's used by girls' football, it's used by boys' and girls' soccer. It is a, in, in our band. So, um, it is, it is a pivotal point that we need to make sure we're taking good care of it.
And maybe this is for another time, but, uh, if we, if we stick with the grass, um, you said earlier, um, we, we dedicate one person. I would like for that person, whoever it is, if we go this way, to get some kind of training on how to, you know, fertilize these fields. Because not only does he have football, but he's got baseball, softball. We got the practice field out there. We got the band, what I would call a multipurpose field. Then he's got, you know, the football field over here. And, uh, get them the training where, you know, they know what to add. You know, they know what to look for. And it, that's gonna be, it's gonna be a full-time job.
Absolutely. And, and part of that is that we paid a company over twenty thousand a year to do that. I mean, and, and that's, that's not a, a chump change. So, um, doing it in-house means that we pay for the chemicals. We pay for all that and the labor that goes with it. But we also need to make sure that we have the know-how and how to do it. I agree with it wholeheartedly. And, and that might be the best option. It might be. We keep kicking the can and we just keep making it work. Um, but I'd like for the board at least to look at all three of the options that I've just mentioned.
And there's no recourse with whoever's doing the maintenance now?
They are no longer doing the maintenance with us. That company that we're, I just mentioned. Is that what you're asking?
So. How long have they not been doing it?
Uh, since June?
When did it start falling apart?
Uh, it wasn't because of, of, their, their, um, choice to move in a different direction was a result of, you know, the field being in the condition that it was and them getting frustrated with, um, the pressure that was put on them to make sure that it's, it's right. So, um, I think that we have a very good plan moving forward that, that what they were doing is not anything that was rocket science. We've got all the chemicals and know-how of what they were doing and we've been watching it for seven years. So, um, it's not, uh, the fields, in my opinion. I've been over those fields now for four years and five and, and seen them. Those other three fields, the softball, the baseball, the practice field and the multipurpose field are in perfect condition. They're, they're doing a great job. It's our football field.
Somebody put their own dirt in there.
Has, has a, has a very significant problem. And they, they couldn't beat it. And, um, they were very frustrated about that. And, um.
Is that the only company that does it? Are there, I mean?
There are companies that do it and, um, like I was saying though, that's nothing that we can't do.
Right.
It wasn't, um, anything that we figured out that the prices and you could break it down, what they were charging us, um, we were charging those for their experience that now, now that we have a lot of.
And they, they admitted to it as well. It was, it was the most challenging field that they managed. And, and they weren't getting it, weren't able to get it done. And, you know, it took us going out and we literally had employees who worked for months solidly just picking weeds that even the chemicals weren't killing.
Um, and if I'm not mistaken, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, the last time we did the top, sanded that field, did that sand come from Jesse?
I believe so. We, we top dressed it every year.
Close to rainy year? And I'm sure it was polluted. That's where that, I'm serious. That's where the sand was off. However, that being said, that's probably what happened. But, um, you know, Mr. Greg Kiki, he was at the race for a hundred years or whatever. He retired in the end. And he's been kind of, but he is a, he is a wonderful person. He has strong ties to this community. And I'm sure he would be willing to help you with a scientific plan because he knows all the emergence. He knows the whole. He helped me with my, but he knows all that stuff. And he's retired now. And I'm sure he would, would be happy to volunteer some time to help us figure out a plan on how to fix it.
Well, whatever direction we go, we're gonna have a nice deal. We're gonna make it happen. But, um, the support of board will definitely, um, be in a different situation moving forward. Any other questions? Stadium football field light replacement. As we've been talking about, it's time for, just like our field, to do some upgrades and repairs. It's not a matter of should we do it? It's we need to do this. Because when we had our lights put in the last, this year, when there was, I think, fourteen or over fourteen or fifteen that were broken, when they went up there on the lift, they saw that all the seals are, are wore out, that, um, the ballasts are old, that, um, what we're doing now is every year gonna be putting a, a big bandaid on, on that. Um, you know, L E D is the, is the way of the future. Um, we have an opportunity. We've, um, had some quotes in the past that were for a system that was put on and then we make payments on. Um, hopefully that we can make an adjustment to that and make an outright purchase and save a lot of interest that would, it would occur when we're making the payments. Um, I will do an R F P on that to do it the right way. We'll get the, um, competitive quotes in and see, see what comes of it. And again, if approved by the board, this is something that needs to be done. Or, like I said, we will, we will be in a situation where we're replacing multiple bulbs and looking at, like Dr. Paulson said, kicking that can down the road. Or eventually we're gonna be in a situation that in the middle of the season, something's gonna happen. It's not easy to get those guys there.
Are we good on softball and baseball field likewise?
I'm so excited about that. Um, our partnership with Coastal Electric is strong as their final. When we made that final payment for the purchase of those lights, they came back and they replaced every single light on the softball field, baseball field and practice field, readjusted them, made sure they're working. So we have brand-new systems on, on those two fields. We're in very, very good repair there. So.
Well, okay, so, but let's make sure we're also noting that the lights fixtures are great. But for whatever reason, when they were put in, the, the, the main circuitry's underground. And so when we get bad weather, it, it fries those poles. And so, um, we have what, two or three of the poles out on the baseball field. And again, it's because they're literally under the ground.
All the breakers are, are underground for whatever reason. Somebody would choose to do that. And every time that we get a good flood in there, it does burn those breakers out. And it is a cost that we have to, um, call somebody because they're, they're a little more high voltage than what our, our guys do. And we have to call up, um, a professional in to restore those. Um, so that is something we'll look at down the, down the road. But again, up top, we're very good repair.
Absolutely.
Um, now it's time to talk about moving on with oak grove. Oak grove, um, we've talked about in the past is an opportunity for us to have a true front end, front of a school. By removing a portion of oak grove, we can open up that full section. And McIntosh County Middle School now has a, a true front door. That, um, walk up to the, um, office will be something that is skewed right from the street. Well, it's a beautiful green area. Do that, we're gonna have to talk about a cost in raising a section of oak grove. So what I'd like to do is hopefully get permission to get an R F P together and see what it's gonna cost to move forward with that. We'll be into that new kitchen, hopefully by second semester. That's, that's the plan. And so after that, we'll be waiting on the new refrigerators and freezers that are coming in. Shortly after those come in, a full transition could be made to that new kitchen. And we'll be ready to make a move. So if we start early and have our ducts in a row, um, we can do a, a, a great transition right from to the new kitchen and possibly open up the front of that school to be something that's, um, special.
I know we talked, in my mind, we talked about this before, but if we could contact the N R, they may assist us with that in using the laws and the, and the block for a week.
That's a great idea. We'd love to be sure to do that.
I, I think typically when you do the R F P, a lot of the contractors who get it want it for a reason and that's what they come in at the rate for. But I mean, I, I agree, if we did it ourselves, it'd be available. But if, if the contractor wants to use it to sell it to somebody, it's usually part of that scavenger type.
Oh, I'm, all I'm saying is the N R may be willing to put out some money for it to do a week. They may have a reason to, whatever.
I know Mr. Hay very well in the N R context. I'll definitely be checking and see if that's, um, something we can do.
Did we ever find out what the purpose of the heel behind the lunchroom is, was?
I don't think we'll know until we break the surface, Mr. Hay.
It's not a drain field, is it?
It, it is, uh, it's probably, and I would say most likely, it is the foundation from the building that burned down there many, 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 many years ago. Um, but as it stands right now, I think they literally filled it with soil, capped it off and, and kept. Um, but as it stands right now, I think they literally filled it with soil, capped it off and, and kept it. And so, uh, those who, who I have spoken with said that it was a time where they could literally walk down into another hallway that was, that was.
It was the, the all-night parade wing, I was in that wing in the night parade.
So, the, but until we actually break the ground, I think you'll find like we found when we took up the foundation over by the football field at the middle school, um, solid blocks and that's what we suspect is probably there.
I also wanna just interject that we have an opportunity to, um, be historic in this, this move, because a part of that section of the school is right on the old historic Darian, um, square. So, we can definitely, um, return that back to some beautiful green space dedicated and, um, bring back some history to, to Darian. It's a significant site that, um, could be really highlighted with the removal of that portion of the, the building.
That's the original Overford Square. Any questions on the facilities, anything else? If not, we'll jump back up, I apologize about jumping over the September financial report, Ms. Franklin. The accreditation is a movement that, every typically four to five years, your school system has to be accredited. Our accreditation runs out on the thirtieth of June of twenty twenty-four. So, as part of that, the new company, um, is Cognia. And Cognia, uh, replaced, as Dan said, replaced Saks. Okay, so, uh, we reached out to Cognia to say, you know, it's time, because it's, this is something that takes place over a very long period of time. During our first initial contact with Cognia, Cognia said that they're waiting to see if the legislators were gonna change the policy, the law. And so, it turned around that the, the state did not change it. So, they determined, um, that they could not only just stick with their four-year plan, but they could also have the ability to extend it out if they didn't see a need otherwise. So, they gave us two more years of accreditation. So, we're now good through thirty June of twenty twenty-six. So, we're accredited through that period of time. Um, what that also means though is that our year of review would end up being the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that's the process where they'll come in with a team and they'll do everything that takes place during that process.
So, does that change our strategic plan?
It, it shouldn't, because our strategic plan leads right into it and might tweak it a couple of dates, but other than that, I mean, we're already working towards that, Mr. Dunn. All right, so, um, Ms. Franklin.
Your turn.
We'll return to page one. The general operating account. We began the month with one point three million. We had receipts of one point five million and that included the transfer from the local projects of five hundred thousand. We had expenditures of one, one point seven million, leaving us with a balance of just over one point one million in the general operating account. On to page thirty-three, general fund revenues. We, with the school year at twenty-five percent complete, we have one point six million in general fund revenues, which again includes the five hundred thousand credits we're in, which is just over ten percent of the budgeted fifty point three million of general fund revenues. Page thirty-five, expenditures. General fund expenditures period to date is two point four million, which is fifteen point five percent of the budgeted fifty point four million in general fund expenditures. And fund balance on page forty. So, we, I closed out the fiscal year of twenty-two and during the month of September, so we closed out, if you noticed, the July one, um, beginning fund equity at two point six million. And, uh, our current, uh, September thirtieth fund balance is just over one point eight million. Okay, on to school nutrition, page one hundred and eleven.
Before you get to that, when do we anticipate tax money starting to come in, Ms. Franklin?
At least with, the tax bills have gone out, so during the month of October, we should start seeing some coming in. But most of it probably November, December, January, we'll have the majority of it in. Okay, page one hundred and eleven, school nutrition. The school nutrition account has two hundred and eighty-one thousand. Money market account, page one twenty-three. Uh, just over one, one million, two thousand in the money market account. Local projects account, page one twenty-seven. We have one point six million in local projects. And finally, the debt service account. Uh, we have a fee loss receipt for September of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, which was a twenty-three percent increase over the same month last year. Um, and our ending balance in the debt service account is one point too much, one point two nine million. Are there any questions over in this back?
Ms. Tammy, back on page one. Um, what is Glendale County BOH?
That is the Board of Health, that money that we get for the extra nursing assistance.
Okay. Okay. Gotcha. That's all I have.
Thank you.
The board minutes are out there, so if you will take a look at those, any corrections that you deem are imperative, if you let Ms. Lane and myself know, we'll go ahead and get those going. So, we've already done out of four, so let's drop down, um, just a quick COVID update, Mr. Mas, if you will.
I'm pleased to announce that we have no current COVID cases in the system, but again, I want to make sure that I don't, um, miss anything by saying that we still are taking care of our health, get protocols, that we're washing hands and, um, doing everything that we can to stay healthy. So, instead of being COVID protocols, we're just gonna start moving to general health and safety protocols of covering your mouth, teaching the kids to, um, wash their hands more frequently and just being aware of what's going on around us with general health.
And I just wanna make sure we emphasize that, that we don't need to get complacent. Um, I think we're already starting to see, um, some instances of the flu. And so, when, the time that we were doing all the other protocols, that flu number went drastically down. And so, I just don't want us to get complacent and, and we need to continue to stress it.
In our hurricane update, um, we were so blessed here in McIntosh County to have, um, been not in the direct path. I wanna just take a second to, um, say a prayer for those people that in Florida that had that devastation. We were again blessed, it was a non-event, I would say, here in McIntosh, we had very little rain and, and the winds didn't pick up much at all. But it was a good drill for us, we prepared well and really proud of our staff and we sandbagged everything. We, we, um, have a real good, solid plan for if something were to happen, we were ready. I think this was a good drill for us. Um, and again, I bow my head to those people that were, were gratitude, gratitude and, so, a march.
Thank you, sir. Um, homecoming parade this Thursday, it kicks off at seven o'clock. Um, the participants, if we can be at Blunt Crossing at six fifteen. And so, uh, it'll finish up, uh, in the corner of ninety-nine and seventeen. That's the route and you should receive an email today to that extent. So, um, I'm hoping that we will all get together and meet up and be there this Thursday.
I did submit our name to Ms. Franklin. I mean, I, I set us up, so if y'all want to do it, I'll send out the whole team.
Uh, and just a reminder that the pink out is Friday, October twenty-first. And so, I know they were selling some T-shirts, but that's, that's another home game, uh, that particular night. So, if you can make that and join us, but that, uh, if you can't, still wear pink that day in support of breast cancer awareness. And then Chair, I have just the one last item during personnel. Um, I do, I would like to just talk about cybersecurity as well as personnel when we go back in executive session. Uh, and the last item up here for community engagement has to do with that policy, um, that it's sitting out there for the thirty-day review. And that's just the, the small changes we made to the public participation. Any questions on any of that?
None.
Other than that, Chair, we, question going to executive session.
We have a motion to go into executive session for personnel and cybersecurity. Motion by Ms. McDonald, second. And Mr. McGaughan, I have those in favor. Motion's five zero, we'll be back. Okay, McIntosh County Board of Education, we're adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel and cybersecurity. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Ms. McDonald, second, Mr. Strigl, all those in favor? Motion carries, five zero. Any more comments?
Um, no, thank you, I'm good.
Mr. McGaughan?
I'm good, thank you.
Homecoming Friday night, parade Thursday, seven o'clock.
Thursday, yeah.
No, I'm sorry, I'm gonna miss it.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Go Bucks, that's good.
Just a reminder to parents that the end of the nine weeks is this Friday. So, you should start looking for progress reports coming out.
Coming out.
All right, and if y'all want to ride in the parade, need us to stay on Blunt Crossing, I'll send all our information in.
Okay.
All right, we're adjourned.